Good afternoon, I call the order of the City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at two P M. We're at the Ocean Shore Library on on its ground. Before we start with the roll call, I introduce Mark Wallace, our newest member. Mark comes with us very rarely, he has experience on the City of Tacoma Planning Commission. And many of you may know him because he has a lot of experience with the community block board. So once you've dealt with community block board directors, you mark, they mark recently left one of them.
Last fall, yeah.
Yeah. Left the, left that board and was bored with something to do, so he's only been here with us. He's been joining us, Mark. So from that, I can go into roll call. Commission of Breaker, Eric R. Carter. Commission Award?
Both in my body, yeah.
Commission of Bar?
Eric.
Mickey Schultz?
Eric.
Mitch LeBachman?
Eric.
Mike Nollalos?
Here.
We're all here. We have seven. It's the first time in a while. That's good. All right, do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, you're doing it. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? The root. Brian?
Second.
Second by form, all in favor?
I have a C seven.
All right, we have two sets of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission meeting on January twenty-three? I assume. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? You have another one? Do we have a motion for the approval of the regular City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission meeting on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three? The root. Second? All in favor? I think this is right, right here. He was very low key. Before we start, I just want to remind everybody of Robert's rules, some folks new to this or have been around a while, I see even the city council gets a little loose on that once in a while, so please, the Roberts rule, raise your hand, let the chair recognize you, and then you can speak. And that also helps with people on Zoom and other things, so they can know who is speaking. At this point, we will open it to public comments. Are there any comments from here? Any comments, Parma Vida?
Good afternoon, Gary. I don't have any comments right now, thank you.
True, alrighty. So, uh, we'll go on to uh, the lot clearing and landscaping code, and when we get there, um, Harry's gonna lead this, and there was an enclosed sheet out with some relevant, uh, relevant code from other cities, uh, but before we start, I had a discussion with a couple city councilmen on the planning commission once, and they said, why are we looking this again? I said, well, because the mayor feels that there is a chance to maybe tighten it up, particularly in the enforcement area, as much as the standard. So, um, Carrie, I'd kind of like you sort of leading off into what you found out in your research about the city code. Specifically, the mayor asked me and I asked Carrie to look at enforcement, really, what can we do to enforce the post-construction landscaping requirements?
Correct, thank you, um. Well, my assignment was to go and look to see how, how, how do other cities enforce, basically? Do they do it with a bond or a lien? So I chose, I didn't choose to look at Seattle, because I think they're just so big and really not relevant to us. So I chose Burien, Washington, North Bend, Washington, and Arlington, Washington. I thought that those, although bigger in population certainly than we are, not necessarily in density, so I thought they matched pretty closely to where we are, and they're also fairly developed in their countables and their ordinances and things like that, as I actually think we are compared to other municipalities of our size. Um. So what I found out is really none of them do a straight lien on landscaping specifically. The only one that liens is really Arlington, and it's more of a nuisance type of. So, and that's the, how, how I read through the ordinances was really more to do with buildings, maintenance type of things like that, if you got a building that's falling apart, and how they enforce it is if they have to go in and clean something up, they basically lien it, and it becomes a part of that uh, owner's tax bill for the next year. So say if they're averaging, say, five thousand dollars a year in taxes, the city comes in and does fifteen thousand dollars of abatement, their next tax bill is going to be twenty thousand dollars for the next year. So it could become a spiraling out of control thing, where we have an owner that can never get out of it. Not sure that that's what we want to do, but it's how they do it. The other examples were performance bonds. And this seemed to be both true in North Bend and in Burien. That's what they do, are absolute performance bonds. They keep the bond for three years, and it is absolutely for the landscaping that goes down. They also require, all municipalities require landscaping to be in place on any street facing important property. So I thought that was interesting. I'm not sure that we call after that directly, but I thought that was pretty good. Um, again, the performance bond stays in place for three years. The other thing that they tend to do as well, which I think we could probably tighten up in our code, is for significant trees and replacement thereof, they actually call out for specific types and hours and size of trees when they're replacing. So I know ours is three to one, and I think for fir trees, I think, I don't remember whether it was Burien or whether it was Arlington, but they call for a six-foot tree from the top of the root ball, and I think a three-inch power or something like that, a pretty big sized tree. So that's why they don't do the three-one, and that's also why they've got the bond in place for three years, because they want to make sure that that landscaping survives. So that was really what I found out. There's a lot of reading in here, so feel free, I'm not gonna go and read it out for bait on. The other thing they tend to do is they put the bond in place anywhere between fifteen hundred and five thousand dollars is typically what they put the bond in place, so we could adopt something similar, or we could say it's one percent of the property value or five thousand, whichever is less, a, a lot of different ways we could end up wording it, so that was my research.
Um, now, my first question is the five thousand dollar landscaping bond, is that rightable?
Sure.
What typical cost for that? Beats me. I'd have to look, I'd have to research it, but roughly, probably, I don't know, at most, so we're not talking massive cost if somebody's on the right note. We're not asking homeowner to go out and give the government five thousand dollars.
The only, the only concern about bonding is that, uh, it's it's personally guaranteed, so it's only their credit's fine, that which they're a homeowner, they should not have any problems with it, so. Let's see about that.
For what it's worth, when I was on the City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission, this one came up, and they chose to do the liens, they'd send a letter, send a letter. After the third letter, they put the lien on it and add it, if the city went in and did the abatement, they would add that to the next year's property taxes.
And what we're dealing with here mostly is lack of post-construction landscapes.
More of a performance issue.
More of a performance issue as opposed to an ongoing maintenance issue. I think some of the recent interest in a datement slash nuisance may address some of the nuisance landscaping of old properties. To some extent, our issue here is, um, post-construction lack of listed. Um, or appropriate.
Types of, you know, if you want to say there's an impact to the rest of the neighborhood by going impervious, um, sometimes those green belts will take, take that into consideration.
Right, this week we lost select, right. So when you, is the the opinion you're fit well is that a wall-to-wall gravel is not a fully permeable surface? It's got some measure of impermeability.
If it's a, if it's red rock and black rock over the top, I'm considering that impervious surface. And, and, and we are going to have to deal with that probably in a more regulatory fashion in our, in our real direct future, as it pertains to storm grain.
Seeing as our estimated population is seven thousand one hundred.
Yeah, we're, we're creeping up on that, and.
Well, we visited this before, we got in heavy discussion on fine landscaping.
Yeah.
And some people, black rock is landscaping. You know, they, my neighbor across the street, he's a new house. He, he left a pretty good perimeter of trees, but then he just grabbed it. He didn't put down red rock. He just grabbed it. So, is that landscaping?
It's, by definition, it is.
Yeah, and that, that's where we have to be careful. And that's kind of why I'm having this discussion. And the other half of the discussion is, is I, I suggested my strategy planning is, I wonder if we may want to look at it early, eventually, some of the stormwater rules before we get locked into it by the state. Um, and that we could, and it's about, we're quick for to deal with the groundwater recharge and the stormwater issues with lots of impermeable surfaces, that we can look at thirty-five percent rule earlier, those state forces up.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to that, if we have a mechanism to do the plan review. Um. I don't feel like I'm qualified to do, you know, the engineered plan review for storm grain on all of these sites, even if I have the time right now. I, I think that's going to be the issue, is who's going to review these plans when they submit them?
Yeah. It's not that hard. The engineer isn't that.
Well, and, and I'm not saying that I'm not willing to learn that, um, i- if, if I'm the appropriate person to be looking at that, even. Um.
It's, it's, it's really falling on the line, in my opinion, between ecology and environment and building code. It's stormwater, because you don't do stormwater reviews, do you, if somebody has a stormwater drainage plan?
I, um, actually, Robert used to do those, when we had a city engineer, the city engineer would do the review of um, stormwater, yeah, any other commercial stormwater, uh, plans that came in, he would do the review on those.
So now those have to be outsourced.
We're, we're in the process of trying to figure out how we're going to do it at this point. Because I, I think I've got one or two coming in.
So you guys will.
If we're, we're hiring a, a project manager, but a project manager is not an engineer capable of reviewing calculations done by either an architect or an engineering firm that's doing stormwater plans.
I had this discussion many times. You guys edit with the personal services contract. Probably, or because you need an engineer to check certain things. And if we do this, I agree with you that some sort of, it's not a high level, a best practices, collection, rain garden, uh, that sort of stuff isn't a very difficult review for an engineer.
Yeah.
Pretty quick. I mean, and, and I know we're kind of going on a rabbit hole, but we're really looking at two things. Gravel, hate to say this, we're looking at gravel, and we're looking at trees, are the two biggest things that appear to be our issues, go ahead.
No, and my understanding, though, that what you're saying is by early adoption of the thirty-five percent rule, that kind of fixes the wall-to-wall gravel situation.
It, it, it doesn't fix the aesthetics of the gravel. It affects the environmental impact of the gravel, not the best.
That, that would be a very good assessment, yeah.
That's what it does.
Well, that's one, that's kind of what I'm thinking, is kind of a win-win if, if we, if we go in that direction, then there's going to be less of that wall-to-wall gravity, because it, because it doesn't qualify for the thirty-five percent. Right?
Yeah, people will, when they, and in from experience, a, you know, a collection of, of best practices by the stormwater manual, it's probably going to be about fifty thousand dollars. My experience is about what it's going to cost. If you want to do more hard stand than that, combined, we're talking roofs, driveways, back to gravel, and you have to collect the water, discharge it into an appropriately sized rain garden with the appropriate stuff in that, and then that treats it. So, you know, ten to twenty miles depending on the size, we still be looking at, in my experience. So it's, it is a deterrent in cost doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The alternative is, I'm not sure. You know, I, we chose mulch and artificial grass, both of which are permeable.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, there's other alternatives. So, we've got two different things here, a little discussion on if we had a performance bond, the bond would be against completion of the approved landscaping plan, is that how you would see it?
That's easy to do that.
And so all of these lock layers have to come back with a landscaping plan?
That's, that would be, yeah, that's the only way you're going to start attaching bonds is, you know, I mean, you got to attach it to the performance of a plan.
Fine. And now, are all of your current ones come with a landscaping plan?
It's, it's super rudimentary. No, I would, I would say no. Um, I have left it up to, and, and it's not so much an issue with the developers, because they all put money into their projects for landscape. Um, I think, I think some of these, um, probably more glaring landscaping, um, you know, basically desert scapes that we're, that we're looking at are, you know, either people from out of town that came in and they want that zero maintenance effect, and, you know, have, have gone down that route. The, the homes being built, there's very few of those that are, that are falling into this category of what we're kind of identifying as, um, you know, unappealing. And I'm trying to find that balance between me dictating what's going to look good to you or you a- as opposed to, I mean, property rights way into this, um, to an extent, or at least they should be given consideration. Um. When, when we're, when we're starting to craft this, you know, the aesthetics of the landscaping. You know, it's all, I almost feel like we have to provide some sort of an alternative for those people that do want the zero maintenance, because they don't live here, and they don't want to have to have a, an on-staff gardener coming by every two weeks mowing the grass, or you know, pruning the brush or something like that, so so maybe some other type of, um, you know, rock landscaping that's other than just a black rock parking pad.
Yeah, that's, that's usually because most of our contract is off of that, is why that's the solution.
Probably the, the cheapest thing to do.
By far, it is, I know.
It, it cuts the cost of landscaping, or it cuts the cost of landscaping, and also cuts cost of maintenance, so.
Six inches of red rock and two inch, three inches of black rock. Not that bad.
Yeah. It'll be several years before you have to do any maintenance.
But it will come.
At some point, it will grow up through there, yeah.
You will buy a propane torch, and you will do all of those things that everybody does. So, and you'll learn all of that. Mulch is the same issue.
Yeah.
You know, so even a heavy mulch layer, you have the same exact issue, um, so. You know, um. So I, I, I just want to hear some more, I mean, one thought is, as opposed to the performance bond, because we don't know what we're asking that you perform to, is we go back to the nuisance lien. If, if somebody's stuff is really bad, then it can fall under the, and you're right, it's more of a nuisance lien than it is anything else, and that becomes reinforcement activity.
Yeah, the thing I struggle is what constitutes a nuisance when it comes to appearance?
Yeah.
You know, on a brand-new landscaped lot, you know, I mean, how, how do we want to pass judgment on that? Do you want me to do that as a planner individually, or do you want to have a board that goes out and looks at landscaping, or, you know, I mean, I'm open to suggestions, um.
I mean, as it was today, though, I guess they, um, oh, I like to roll any parts.
Yeah, no.
If somebody had a lock layer, and their post-planting, post-construction landscaping plan was wall-to-wall gravel, would that be approved?
If it was identified, um, I, I don't think I could not approve it, because it's, it's landscaping, it's, it falls under the, I, you know, under the definition of landscape. You know, rock is, is, uh, you know, some people, I, I don't know if they find it beautiful as much as they find it appealing, because there's no maintenance.
I mean, so what are we, without?
Do we, do we want to, as a, as a planning commission, do you guys want to outlaw that? And, and I guess you have the power to make that recommendation and and see if the council has an appetite for it.
Yeah, in, in the outlaw, it would have to be some sort of no more than X percentage of a front yard being, you know, just like we, just like you did in the architectural standards on the face of the house, you require some sort of an attempt.
An articulation.
An articulation of what is acceptable. In, in that, we did, you got through that in the architectural standards, in those paths.
Yeah.
Um, so the question is, do you want to enforce that, and then what is reasonable? For the amount of monolithic, what do we call it, monolithic gravel? Or, I mean, my neighbor's got pavement on the front of his house in the street, you know, within three foot of the lot line on either side, that's obviously a problem, that's an old house, the seventies. And that's been done that way since the seventies. Um, so, I mean, is there a want to discuss some sort of maximum percentage of monolithic coverage in a front yard? You ever been following that, man? I mean, you've been doing this long enough, and you went through this with the architectural standard, well, yeah, I went through before that, too. Yeah, um, it, it's really slippery slope, and, you know, like, my next order neighbor, um, his idea of landscaping was, he brought in like big rock.
Round rock?
Yeah, round rock, and his whole thing, and then the gravel down driveway. The next guy comes in, he takes all that rock, he puts it lakeside.
So it's, I have a problem with that. Just to let you know.
It's not a good practice there.
Yeah.
So, you know, how do you define? I, I, I struggle with this one. Because how do you tell, how do you tell a guy, how do you tell a guy he can only have this much black rock or gray rock, or five eighths minus, but he can use other kind of rock wherever he wants? Maybe it's the monolithic.
I was just going to go back to what Dan said earlier. Do we want to define what landscape is? Because I think we can go in all kinds of different directions, and then what's the right answer? Is there a definition that we can then work off of? And that's, that's the tough question, I think. What is landscape here in Ocean Shores, and do we want to, you know, make a policy of what that looks like? And then we can enforce if it looks like it, and then enforce if it doesn't, but.
They're basically, you need a standard for group or discipline.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, correct. So something else I want to bring out that I'm starting to notice a lot, and that is the installation of fences along property lines. Um. I've got a friend of mine that's in the fence company, and he's popping posts in the ground every day as fast as he can.
Oh.
So, um, you know, one of my, one of my thoughts as it pertains to landscaping was, you know, maybe retain some perimeter of natural vegetation to, you know, to offset some of the impacts of maybe internal black rock lay down, but we've got this issue of fences going up at a record pace right now. Um, so that's going to have to roll into this, you know, whatever we do on, you know, landscaping for that, we need to a- at least consider that there's going to be a fence dividing two different landscapes from neighbors, or you know, those kind of things. It's going to impact how you can landscape when you put a fence up.
And the ordinance allows the landscape, there's no offset required from the property line on that.
No, there's not, and, and same thing, the, the fences can be up to six feet without permit on the, uh, in, within the side yard. So.
Right. But we don't seem to be, so are you have thoughts on any of that, so just here?
I was just thinking about people who are now landscaping without the need for water. And, a- as this state moves along toward whatever plans they have to save the world, water be part of that, and or using less of it be part of that, too. And so, to the extent that we have watering restrictions coming along, will that cause us a problem with landscaping?
Yeah, I mean, I've been in zero-scape community, it's difficult, uh. And we usually have the opposite problem here, too much water, as we also said before, other than two months. You know, for ten months a year, we have too much water. That's the bigger landscaping issue, every two months a year, we all go dry, everything dies, but.
Um, I, this is likely just a personal opinion, but I think the whole reason that we're, I feel like the reason that we're looking at this is because of, on one side, a few bad actors. Um, and, and then on the other. Um, and and then on the other.
There are a chance. We're gonna wait a couple minutes to see if anyone wants to sign back into.
Yeah, I was gonna email, um. Beta real quick, just to let her know.
We need to kick around on purpose. Oh, she's in the waiting room. There we go. Peter, we apologize, we have a technical malfunction here, and I think we've solved it. And so, you know, to continue on, um. Really, I'm talking about, but what? Mark said, or you guys have said, in order to have a performance bond, we have to have a standard. And and this is standard is written right now, it's pretty. Luke, could you sort of describe the standard, or do you think Mark was the third?
Well, so so basically, any. Any vegetation that they wanna remove, the only restrictions on vegetation coming out is the significant trees and the loophole in that is. You can't take a significant tree down unless it's a danger tree and and the definition of a danger tree could be. You know, based on the the last two or three storm events, we've had trees come down across houses. In almost every corner of Ocean Shores. So so I'm having a real hard time not allowing somebody that says I'm afraid of that tree hanging over my house. I'm letting them take it down. I'm issuing a clearing permit to let them take that tree down. Cause I don't wanna have to be sitting out there with Brian explaining why I didn't let it down and the insurance is now buying a roof. Or worse yet, somebody gets hurt.
Oh, I I have one that. Connected in a way, basically, a contractor went in, put in a wall. And undermine the tree and doing so. Tree fell down. But now they actually contractor's insurance paid for it.
Yeah, and and that's one of the thing, one of the difficulties that I'm having out there. It used to be, you know, a house was built in the middle of undeveloped lots. And and so. Requiring erosion control measures really didn't lot, make a lot of sense. They were leaving a little vegetative perimeter around the the outside and some vegetation on the front side. No sand was blowing on anybody's patios and stuff. Now we're clearing the last lot between two houses. And erosion control is something that I'm clamping down on now because I've got sand blowing, you know, across this foundation. Onto the guy's patio, so, um. The the dynamics of the clearing process have really shifted from, you know, a lot in the middle of the block being cleared. To the last lot in the middle of the block being cleared, and so. You know, if there's a tree left and they've had the roots cut all the way around them. I'm not inclined to make somebody keep that tree on their property and hope that the wind doesn't take it out. But what I do tell them is there's a mitigation requirement. If you don't leave at least ten percent. Of the mature trees, meaning the eight inch chest height, um, in the conifer species, then you're gonna have to replant, you know. The three to one ratio, anything, you know, beyond the ten percent that you take. And and I'm seeing that I've got pretty good compliance with that. I'm surprised in, um. Uh, Chris is is, like I said, she's doing these follow up inspections now and she's bringing in pictures of a lot of, um, conifer species trees that are being planted. Some of them were pretty small, um, but some of them were, you know, they're they're like six feet tall now after just a couple of years. The the Leland cypress grows like crazy, um, and it meets the the criteria of a conifer being planted back in the mitigation ratio, so. Um. You know, I I think we're we're doing okay that way. It's that mindset of we don't wanna take any more mature trees down. People call these old growth spruce trees, they're not over. I've counted the rings on a four foot diameter tree. It was less than seventy years old. We have winter or spring and summer growth rings. That are almost an inch thick in these spruce trees. So if you look at the average size that are, that's on the peninsula here, most of these trees are. You know, less than fifty years old and and it's not in a mature old growth forested environment, so. For us to refer to those trees as old growth trees is inappropriate.
The is that type of growth, the less stable growth too, the way the roots are growing and everything else?
Yeah, the stronger, the the smaller the the growth rings, the stronger a piece of wood. And and when we get to, you know, somewhere between fifty and maybe eighty years or forty and eighty years on these spruce trees. The middles start to get rotten. I've got examples out in the weather wax property where we've got. You know, beautiful four, five foot diameter spruce trees broke off twenty feet up with the middle is either hollow. Or you can stick your thumb in it, it's so punky. So when they get to a certain stage out here, um. I can't explain the reason, but they start to rot from the inside out and basically the only thing you've got holding these trees up is the rind or the outside of the. You know.
So. Three year old during lot clearing is inevitable. It's. With our sixty foot wide lots. And the and our setback rules. Almost impossible, very often, very difficult to retain many trees. Is that a good assessment?
It is, and the reason for that is, um, you know, the viable roots typically are are hanging down from the drip line of the tree. A a thirty year old tree has a twenty foot diameter drip line. And and so if you take twenty feet of a tree on on one side of the lot and twenty feet of the tree on the other side of the lot, you consume the entire lot without cutting any roots. So you're gonna be either forced to cut roots and and present a danger. Or or not develop the lot. Or what I'm allowing is to remove the tree and plant smaller trees in replacement. In areas that hopefully won't be a hazard in the future.
Spruce will better than the, or or what we've got out there, I would say.
Uh, I I don't feel like I'm qualified to to pick. I can tell you that that the, um. That the cypress grows really fast, um, the Leland cypress seems to put on, um, length and dirt and it does really, it sustains pruning really well. So you can shape them, turn them into hedges, you can maintain their height. Um, they they handle the clippers really well. I don't know if a spruce would do that, or or if you planted a spruce tree, or we required the planting of a native spruce or birch tree. Um, we do have some really nice spur in the. In the peninsula and and I don't see the rot in the middle of those. But they don't have quite the density of branches. They're they're more of a spindly looking conifer as opposed to either a spruce or maybe even a cedar. There's there's a few, not too many. It's, and short pine is another, um, you know, I mean, some people look at those as a trash tree. And, uh. It's in, it's in the eye, you know, the beauty is in the eye of the eye, so, um. But the the shore pines do well out here, um, they do well in the wind. I mean, I've got some that that. The wind has beat them down to just a bush and and they're really structurally, they're secure. They're not gonna be blown over on buildings and stuff like that. If they're allowed to go high, the area down around the, um. Down around the interpretive center, if you walk through that nature trail that they have down there and look at those pine trees. Um, it was either disease or drought or something, um, caused a lot of. You know, die off in those trees and they're falling. I had a, I had a, an individual take after me for allowing a bunch of trees adjacent to that to be cut. But when I walked through there, there was a bunch of rotten limbs, things were falling down, tops were breaking off. They looked like a danger to me without being a a certified arborist. I mean, I've been in the woods my whole life, but. Um.
And then then we get to the third issue, which is a certified arborist, which I think I've learned is Olympia.
It it is, I I've requested a couple of people that have told me I've had a certified arborist come in and look at it. Well, would you send me his contact information? Yeah, he's in Olympia. So to my knowledge, what we have here on the peninsula are. Experienced tree petters, guys that came out of the logging industry that have been working around trees their entire lives. They got pretty good judgment, but they're not a, you know, college certified. Arborist, so we need to decide if. Um, if if that's gonna be a requirement, then we're gonna add some time and some process again to and and cost already to.
Um, I don't think anybody here is arguing about. How the process is going right now. I don't think there's anybody. What we're struggling with is how do we address? The public's concerns. That. We're almost trying to prove that you're doing the right thing. And I'm struggling with how we do that.
Well, I, so one of the things that I'm doing is I drive around doing, you know, uh, evaluations on clearing permits. As I'm looking at stuff that's been done behind me. And I'm just not seeing a bunch of stuff that most reasonable people would find objectionable. You know, if you go down Marine D Drive, all the ones that were cleared and stripped and and people were complaining about, cause it was bare sand. Now has a house, you know, maybe a couple rows or some landscaping in front, some Leland cypress on the sides. And and they look, you know, in in my opinion, attractive.
Yeah, I mean, it's a problem, and then you go further down and you see path work, which is, you know, over the top landscaping when you get into oil, that's the commercial.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You know, he's he's putting thirty to fifty thousand dollars of landscaping. Which is a lot. Many of his properties, so.
Yeah, and I don't think we could expect that from a general.
That's a personal decision he's made from the fact, so I mean, one option is that we sit, we go back and say what we have here is an education issue. We don't have a structural insurance or a code issue. And then figure out how we deal with that. I mean, would you see us do anything to make your job easier as the commissioner for the last few? I'll put you on spot on, there it is.
Uh, you know, I think if we had some, some either square footage of of vegetated landscape. And and use the term vegetated landscape as opposed to, or or maybe vegetated or rockery other than. Black rock.
Or maybe permeable rock would be a good.
Permeable rock might be a good term. I mean, maybe come up with some standards that, um, that would require. So we've already got a piece of property that's that's only gonna be covered by a maximum of forty percent structure. So we've got sixty percent of the lot left. You know, a lot of that's gonna be taken up by driveway and parking. Sidewalks, decks, um. You know, how much land do we have left and what does the group feel is a reasonable amount to require? Either landscaping or natural vegetation. If they choose to leave it natural vegetation, that would be my preference, you know, I mean, from a.
Of course it was.
I mean, I mean, that's what ecology would would prefer and. Um, but if they wanna get side, outside of natural vegetation, you know. What is, what is the community wanna see going forward? I'm happy to enforce whatever you guys wanna see as a community going forward. But right now, it's, um, I've got people on. Far one side and far the other that are, um. You know, they don't wanna take any trees out, uh, leave all natural vegetation, and some people wanna take it all out and put black rock down. And and I'm just trying to find some some sweet spot in the middle.
I'm gonna point to something. There's a new guy, Mark, you wanna put something together on a lot of those lines?
I would be glad to.
Yeah, just for the next meeting, just send it to me next week sometime, just sort of what you would see as the standard we have discussed about. Um, non homogeneous natural vegetation and or permeable rock in some sort of percentages we can start arguing about. Go over there and would, uh, should we confide the front from the backyard? In your opinion. Because what's gonna happen is somebody could gravel that whole front yard and be the requirement by.
Well, it depends on, you know, who we're trying to satisfy.
Everybody.
Wish you luck there. Um. Yeah, and maybe maybe you wanna have it street side only and and if they wanna rock the entire backyard for, you know, zero maintenance. Um, the thing is, they don't, it normally doesn't go that way, or normally the.
All the way around, we've seen a few.
Yeah.
Three sixties, there's a couple three sixties up there.
And there's, there's some that, um, you know, rock out front. A fence goes up that goes from the front of the house over to the side of the property line back, and then they've got yard in the middle or landscaping in the back. The fences are gonna be height, the the number of fences that I'm seeing going up to hide the front yard are, it it's amazing, it's like. It's like people don't want anybody seeing what they're doing.
Well, it's also they're all gonna get blown down in about five years. They're all doing. Buttoning up tight, absolutely privacy, and they're all blowing up, the ones that are about five to six years old.
I'll be curious to see what we have in another five or six years, if the fences continue to go in at the rate they're going in. If you think the landscaping looked bad, you're gonna drive down the street and be looking at a row of fences. That's what I see. I see that coming.
So is your suggestion that we also consider some sort of setback or? Bent from front yard. Street side fencing?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, maybe the landscaping and the fencing could be tied together to where if you're gonna put fences on the street side, you have to have some landscaping in front of it or something. I I don't know.
Mark, could you take a quick? I I don't even drive down to a boulevard now and see about formal. Yeah, go onto that recently.
Yeah, well, we can definitely see as you're saying, uh, stating about newly put in fences. That look like, uh, well, they're in trouble. Cause of the wind, they're buckling already, and I'm I'm saying one to two years already. They're buckling, so we are seeing, we walk a lot and we're seeing fences in just various stages of disrepair.
And I don't know if people are doing this as a security measure or as a privacy measure, or maybe it's a combination of both, but, um, but it's starting to take on a look.
Is what the term would be, it looks like a. Any further discussion on that? Feed the source hard?
I think we've beaten it up. Yeah, we we, uh, we look at that and and that's the design for one of our shoreline stabilization managers over on the base side. Yeah, it is, it is the new buzzword, um, talk software, we need to breathe.
Alright, so now that we're all back again, we're gonna move on to, and this is my lead. And I'll do a little preface, if you've been following what's going on. In the State Assembly, bill housing. Flash formal housing are really, really coming out of the road. Possibly hard, and I know someone's been very much into this, um. Well, staying abreast of it. The two things going on are ADUs, which we've already been notified we have a problem with, but they may make ADUs even more open. And the other thing is middle housing. And I've read, I finally found the latest release draft legislation. It's so confusing to me, I can't really say. One interpretation is there will never be anything such as an R one lot in a city with a population of six thousand, that's kind of. That's the worst case of the legislation. But basically, you cannot prohibit the construction of a duplex. In any lot of the city over six thousand. Or a whole place or anything. So. If that happened, this would significantly change. A lot that goes on the city, or if if what what really would happen. A lot that goes on the city. Well, if if what what really would happen would be, there is no market to build duplexes, which is all original, I think. So I I wouldn't really hit us, I don't think, because we haven't seen a rush from people to build rental property in this town anyways. You, yeah, the one over here behind the golf course, the small place that we're going. But what's interesting, and we can't tell the legislation of this, and I don't know how to work it is. We have a ton of unsold multifamily, unbuilt multifamily lots. We've never, I've never done the research, but I was sipping through um. The RTIS site for the county, where you start going into places like uh Fairview. Which is R seven, the entire length of it. Very few of those lots have been built either side. Go ahead.
In defense of Fairwood, most of that is wetland, and it's going to be difficult to develop anything in there.
Well, there's a lot that, well, this is not for the rest of.
Yeah, that that's the biggest chunk of high density or multifamily uh zoning that we've got out there, I think is in that general area, and there's just. There's a couple of big tracks out there that are left undeveloped as of as of yet, but I think the wetlands are going to be the challenge.
But there's a lot of gold buildable lots that haven't been built on out there.
Correct.
I mean, there's city owned a few, which shocked me as I was going through them. I don't want to see those lots on Fairwood to do.
Recoes.
You think they are?
Yeah, uh, L I D or tax tax.
But there are some out there. But the point being is, unlike most cities, we don't lack unbuilt multifamily lots. That's not our issue.
Or lots of that kind, really.
Yeah, what was your last?
This proposal was rigged to solve a problem we don't have.
Right.
Seattle does, obviously. Many, many other cities do have a lack of available land to build a house on. A lot, I call it. Two hundred thousand dollars to build a house, it makes economic sense, but here, they don't have a problem.
What we do have the similar problem with them is a lack of, this is what the mayor and someone complimented talking to me about, is. Your brandly new commissioned police officer firefighter teacher affordable housing at that level. Um, so that's really what we're looking at, the same issue, but a different solution for us. You know, what we're looking at is can you get? The, you know, Richard Will's school teacher example, you know, new school teacher, first year firefighter, first year policeman. Into a home for, you know, two fifty, three hundred, nothing for sale right now for that door.
Aren't the uh duplexes, the triplexes, the common wall subdivisions, aren't that kind of, aren't those kind of solving that problem?
I don't know.
They 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 provide a hundred and eighty thousand dollar option, but for a young family living in a duplex or a or a, you know, two unit. Common wall structure isn't, you know.
Yeah, no, I I know it's not ideal.
Yeah.
It is a solution. They are out there. There's one hundred eighty thousand. I'm not sure what they're.
I think that's what they were started the com- they started the Commonwealth subdivided um. Structures, either the three unit or the two unit, they're starting them in that, you know.
Yeah, one eighty to two twenty range.
Somewhere in that range, exactly.
Well, I see, it was short of me stuff.
It it's more of a single school teacher or widow widower, um, it's more of a single person solution as opposed to a small family or a developing family. Solution.
So saying all that, I went and looked at sort of what keeps us from doing that in this. In this city, why, what are some of our strange orders to sort of prevent that? Because as far as told, as we all know, it's not the cost of land in Oshishawis, it's what you can build on that land is what is driving home prices up. Things like minimum square footage is minimal lot sizes, all those sort of things sort of drive it up. So I'm basically being, sort of the geek I was trying to looking at it, I I looked at three things on page fifteen. That we can talk about all separately. Uh, eliminate, reduce, or standardize the minimum square footage and multi-story square footage requirement. Um, and I'll go through these in detail. Modify the minimum square footage density requirements in multifamily homes to allow subdivision. And and construction of multiple individual homes, basically take an R two, seven lot and say you can buy it in half. And not beat the minimum square footage and have smaller lots. And then the, the one that few people are trying to talk to me about, uh pyramid zone. In the residential areas, you know, prohibit the construction of one single family home on any multi, one multifamily lot, that being the most extreme. Because I would say that ninety percent of the construction on multifamily lots is in single family home. All of those lots are sold. Purchasers probably intend on building a single family home in this multifamily. It's all property, so for us to go back, so you can't do that would be very different. Those sort of all of that. Um, the first one is interesting, it says, with the exception of, I've got a highlight on page fifteen, seven fifty, one fifty. With the exception of partial zone R one, single family residential, more than one structure, how they're permitted permissible principle may be enacted on a single lot. Provided that you meet the minimums, so density, there are very few lots. Where you can divide in half. And beat the lot density requirements, right, Marshall?
The the unit density requirements, correct.
So that's kind of, it says you can build two.
Provided you have the room.
Provided you have the room, but there's really no lots. Can you think of any, Thor, in town where you would?
Well, when you get to the unit density of seven hundred square feet, you're drilling units, that's a little easier.
Well, no, it's still, it's the, the issue is the two, two hundred, all lots will be seven thousand two hundred square feet minimum. That's the issue, the seven thousand three hundred square foot requirement, right?
That's true, and and it's interesting that, you know, I just happened to run across this, there are a bunch of lots that um that were platted smaller than that. And the provisions in the code uh allowed for smaller than that, provided it was done prior to um. I don't know what the date was, but but it was, it was, was it seventy one?
Yeah.
So if the lots were platted um prior to that date, then they were allowed to, you know, be built with a single family. I know out on the uh. Uh, shrimp, lopari, the ports off of South Sand Dune, there's a bunch of those interior cul-de-sac courts that are in the sixty five hundred square foot range, yeah. Which I was, I was, because I was looking at them to see if they met the density requirements, like huge lot doesn't meet the density requirements as planned. And so I had to do a little research to figure out that, oh, they were allowed to be planted smaller back in that day, and they made an exception for it in the code.
So what this really does does mean though is because it is in every, I went to every single arc and looked at it. That restriction is printed in every, every zone, every lot must be. So where did seven thousand two hundred square feet come from? Is that a percentage of an acre? It came from the covenants.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But what what's, why does that an acre, I don't, like point two five or something?
It's a convenient sixty by one twenty multiple, that's all. This happened to be the most common size they land developers, when they drew the maps, used.
Saw the chain they had.
Yeah, and and then the covenants also make reference to that. Seventy one, when they developed it, oh, they copied the covenants and made it make any sense, and that was one of the things they they copied. Was seventy four square foot, yeah.
Then what purpose does that serve?
Uh, advanced the covenants. Well, because at that time, the covenants were the zoning code that said before it became a city, and they didn't want to create confusion.
But what does a seven thousand, what do you get by saying the minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet?
Yeah, I think simply agree with the covenants because they didn't want to battle between landlords and city officials.
So I'm trying to think, I don't know, what happens if we get rid of the minimum?
Right.
Yeah, no, very crazy. What bad happened?
I think it would happen, the only reason I bring this up was. It it would have, in conjunction with the minimum square footage and first story requirements, you would also have to reduce the minimum square footage requirements. To allow you to take, what's the typical lot size in Oshishawis?
Seventy twenty, sixty by twenty.
Yeah, there's some that are larger, multifamilies are.
Seventy by one ten.
Okay, so basically you would have to allow a thirty five thousand square foot lot. Thirty five hundred square foot lot in a main floor size of five hundred square feet.
I don't know if they're calling for subdivision in existing lots, I don't believe that eleven ten says that. But it's it's one option we could always consider, actually.
No, what I'm saying is that gets to. The the Commonwealth structure allowed people to have lots well under that. Basically, own property well under that, the bizarre provisions of that, correct, Marshall?
Yeah, that's correct, and and.
So allow people own property at well under seven thousand square feet, probably the.
Well, I think twelve hundred, twelve or, sure, I want to say twelve hundred feet per unit.
Yeah.
Was the the smallest that I I was looking at that this morning to see how how small of a lot we could go with for those if um. And and I don't know if there's an appetite for this or not, there's a lot of desire from outside. I get a lot of requests for people wanting to build detached structures using that same, those same square footages. And and I think, you know, the the only way that I'm allowing somebody to go through a subdivision. Is with a Commonwealth subdivision, meaning a Commonwealth structure.
Is that's the only way the code lets it happen?
That's the only, exactly, that's the only way, if if the code were modified to allow more than one structure on a lot. And allow that same provision of uh, you know, these smaller units. Now, when you get away from the Commonwealth structure, then the table that we eliminated the application to multifamily units. All of a sudden comes back into play.
That's why we're looking at both of those.
You, yeah.
Have to look at them together.
You you do.
And so, you know, the goal here is to take a seven thousand square foot lot, build two homes and the twelve hundred. You know, the the Commonwealth getting built right around here now, you have to orient a little bit way around twelve hundred square feet. And to generate two lots on two homes, a house size twelve hundred square feet, the lot size thirty five hundred.
It significantly increases the density and um.
It does.
But but it should reduce the price and potential, uh, but it's grasping at this this middle, middle housing issue.
Yeah, that's what's getting, but go ahead.
Well, the their their problem with making lots smaller, you run, you run against uh. Two other provisions in the code, one of which says every lot has to be fifty feet wide at the street. On a new subdivision, and the other one is that every lot has to have access to the street.
But uh, what about the keyhole lots on?
Well, there, again, before nineteen seventy one.
It says it has to be fifty square feet?
Yeah, no, fifty feet frontage. When you know subdivision, now, but the other way around, this is, we don't worry about any of this at all. If if you want to build multiple houses on a lot, you make a condominium rather than a Commonwealth deal, right, we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, but that's up to the developer, we can't encode.
No, we can't, but it's already a mistake, but we have nothing to do with it. If you want to build three houses on a lot, and he doesn't want to do a Commonwealth, you can do a condominium and avoid the city altogether.
But again, we're looking at ways to sort of accommodate. And again, my proposal would be if we only did this allowing a lot to get around, not get around. But to understand the density impacts is only allowing on multifamily zone lots. So you take a lot that already was so to carry a higher density. Because when you get to R twos, R threes, R fours, by design, it was a higher density. You know, the the thought would be, we would do this, one way to do it is do this in multifamily zone lots, allow smaller subdivision than the current code.
We get into a real problem if eleven, if H B eleven ten is passed as is, and that is there's provision that says that we can't do anything. Who mess up their grand plan. In other words, we can't restrict uh on on street parking. We can't uh, we we can't make the dent, make for the square footage, minimums of houses and lot and everything else. Anything that doesn't conform to their, to their plan here. Which means that whatever we have right now for minimums on square footage of the main floors, on cover, lot coverage is all up the window. Because if we don't change it within twelve months, they will. Well, we don't like that, obviously.
But and again, we're looking to solve the same issue in a way that's unique to our situation, where we have all these unbuilt. Um, multifamily lots, the thought being if somebody has been sitting on this multifamily lot, that's a buildable lot, not one that's impacted. They perhaps now have more incentive to offload it because it can be subdivided and has more value. So if it was a thirty thousand dollar lot, now becomes a two twenty thousand dollar or forty thousand, this is the only thought.
Yeah, I I don't know whether ten or twenty thousand dollar difference between house costs is gonna make a bunch of a different cost.
Well, there is, the idea is the square footage is what's driving.
They become small.
But yeah, the table, yeah, I'll change the table, you know.
Go ahead. So with with what Thor just laid out there, kind of got me to thinking, does it make sense to get too far into this? If whatever we do is going to be usurped by this bill, if it's built fast. I mean, I'd hate to put a year into, you know, getting us in the community sweet spot and then have the state come in and and shred it for us.
Well, I think. What we're doing is sort of in line with what the state's trying to do and getting ahead of that. I think that.
But if it's not directly in line with it, I see a risk in having them.
Um, I don't think they're gonna come after us that quickly. They never come after us, maybe you. After a notifying.
I I don't believe we're enforcing the.
I, what I see in the House bill, our biggest threat is the minimum square footage. That's gonna get us, that's gonna be gone.
Not only the house, but the, but the forty percent of the lots too, because if you look at what their ideal is of a typical lot in Seattle, they are. Line to line house, I mean, there's, there's no setbacks at all. From the front or back, or side.
If we could hope for some sort of sanity and.
There is a, there is a possible remedy, I guess, if you want to call that, and that is that. These one, these, this proposed law. Has no effect on existing land covenants. And the existing land covenants basically say that the various, the various subdivisions around here are restricted to single family residence. No matter what the state wants to do, we're still restricted under covenants, while the city has no ability to enforce covenants. Um, landowners do, now what position city takes on it, I don't know. But somebody wants to put a a four flex on a single family lot would obviously be violating the covenant of all neighbors.
And that's, and again, I I'm not proposing we look at single family, I'm looking at strictly multifamily lots. With the ability to subdivide and toothpaste. Single family lots, get rid of the table, it's on page sixteen, if you guys haven't seen it, and. I know we couldn't get there when we did the architecture standards update. What, was that the stuff that ever, did I hear that? No.
Not in the R one.
Not R one. No, it actually.
I mean, it was discussed, but it fell flat.
Yeah, really.
There was no interest.
But you you know, you're you're talking about getting homes for families of the people that are coming in. A family in a six hundred fifty square foot house? That's a little tight. That's main floor. The issue we've got is, you know, the the two story that becomes, you know, a livable space. But there's no reason they can't do six fifteen and six. And I'm not as, I I'm not as familiar in story seventeen A, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty two, thirty, thirty four, is that? Much construction going on in those divisions at all? Are you seeing that, Marshall, where the thousand square foot's coming into play?
There's a few, not a, not a tremendous amount. At least on the waterfront, the the eight hundred square foot lots, there's, there's, you know, quite a bit. There was a lot done in eighteen nineteen. Dumper was um, doing a lot of construction in uh eighteen nineteen nineteen A.
Yeah.
Over the last couple of years, you you drive those loops around Spinnaker and just start going outer and you'll, you know.
Yeah, those are thousands, but his are about twelve and.
Probably twelve hundred, yeah.
They fit the code. I don't know if anybody's gonna really build something small because it's kind of inconvenient to. Squeeze past somebody walking down the hallway.
So we're setting the table and the issue.
Well, on. On some it is because it does restrict your your uh interesting architectural features, yeah. If you're doing a two story, a two story house, they've all got to be depending on where you are. At least a thousand on the main floor and who knows what else, but um, it it does make, it does make some things complicated. I never thought it was a good idea anyway, but.
I mean, so the bigger issue is the paracelot E, which is a thousand square foot main floor.
Right. Well, that's more, that's more of a concern.
Right, that's where you get into the multi-story.
You you can't build a thousand on main floor and then three hundred on the top floors, it just makes one. Doesn't make plumbing electricity or anything, it's a lot of things really do. And a lot of people do a reverse too, it makes even tougher. They have nothing much on the bottom floor, but the main floor is upstairs.
Yeah, the view houses.
And you end up with a lot of that down in those.
Yeah.
Those southern.
Many have almost like stairways, take up at least sixty four square feet and then this kind of crazy stuff.
So is there a benefit in getting rid of paraphrasy?
Has the advantage of keeping the house.
But is there, what what do we say the benefit of getting rid of it is?
Architectural diversity, one. Architectural diversity, one.
Less footprint.
Less footprint, you can keep more landscaping on your lot, you have more view corridors on the lots between houses, stuff like that. Most most houses, most houses you can't see between on the on the waterfront. Because the lots are fifty feet, sixty feet wide, the houses are fifty feet wide. And you get ten feet to look between them, so there's no view corridors or any vegetation like either.
Now, those would be close off by.
And so, yeah, the the issue though, and should we, if we're gonna go talk about getting rid of E, going back to making one standard middle square footage?
Just like made the whole damn thing, no, no, no other city doesn't stay, I know I wish it.
It's it's a box, and I'm not sure, we're we're gonna revisit this again next week, and I'm gonna maybe talk to them before that. The only, the only issue I have is like on water for lots, those are mostly, they're very mature neighborhoods.
Those are what?
Mature neighborhoods.
But yeah, and they're almost all covered up with houses on.
Yeah, so but so you got, now you got two big nice big houses and you got somebody coming to put a shack.
Probably nobody built shacks, but if they do build smaller houses on smaller footprints, they might make them taller. But I've not, we've not seen any value. Uh reduction because of a small house next to a big house, you know, so. Yeah, well, it's not a dump, you got dumps, you can have dumps anywhere.
We have, we have some four thousand more. So I mean, back to the, and I've started all of this discussion is. If there's an appetite to reduce the lot square footage in multifamilies. Then we also look at what then. I mean, I guess this table technically shouldn't apply to multifamily anyways, great lots, we're saying this whole provision doesn't apply to multifamilies. We're gonna fix that.
It shouldn't, but we don't say that.
We're gonna basically say all of this doesn't apply, none of this applies to multifamily or. None of it applies to multifamily or business.
Right now, the only thing that we've excluded is uh multiple dwelling.
Right. Right, so we're gonna probably take all of it and say this only applies to R one. All of these standards. Cause that was the intent. The planning commission when they brought it to the council was R one.
Yeah, and I've, and and based on interactions with this group, I, that's what I'm enforcing today, is I'm not um applying any of this to. Um, we we are applying it to residential multifamily, but we're not applying it to.
We we have some more discussion about that.
And I just checked this morning that house bill eleven ten is still in house appropriations, so it has not moved. Since our last meeting, well, I was a spectator last time, uh since our last discussion on that.
But it been irregardless of eleven ten, I think this is something that we need to consider looking at.
Oh, sure.
From housing affordability issue, is what are we doing? The city code today that preventing the construction of single standalone homes. Attractive to a young family starting up, that's kind of what the. What the homework was.
One good thing we have a problem with is that we we can build multifamily on, we could build a multifamily structure on a multifamily lot. But we can't separate them with separate roofs, it can't have to be. One structure unless we go through this other thing, but there's still a common wall. So we can't build four cabins on one multifamily lot, there's four cottages.
Correct.
That's still not enough. Because the code was written wrong.
Well, because, well, I just read that very first original that said you would.
Yes, but also says at the beginning of every, every R, whatever it is, it says. Uh, the definition of multifamily is not building or buildings, if you're building. Right, and so one, a building has one roof, building's that too, so. For want of an S or lack of an S, or having an S, you can't build tiny homes basically or smaller homes on multifamily lot. We do a lot of row houses, but row houses are the only multifamily thing other than apartment buildings.
So I was looking at. Uh, R two duplex. And the issue with the R two duplex, it says two family dwellers have a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet for a structure. That gets to be the problem, because there aren't many sixteen thousand square foot R two lots out there.
Yeah, we've got some issues where some of those lots fall short by one or two square feet too, if you do the math on the flat.
Right. So the question, and we'll we'll talk about this some more, and I will make what I'll do for the next meeting, for those of you that aren't, I will go through and do the other high density. Of the identity, multifamily zoning, because they're not very long, they're a page each.
Oh, yeah.
There are a lot, and then we can kind of look at, there's really no difference. I mean, the the last thing that I threw out there as the biggest thing and. I don't see how we would ever do it, is pyramid zoning of, these are all getting consumed by single family home construction. And I guess that's just the nature of most of them short. That is there's something we can do. To incentivize, you know, more affordable, not affordable housing, but more affordable housing. In these areas. And the thought being smaller homes, smaller lots would be a start. Again, all the the goal here is ownership for your professionals to move in.
Separate, separate ownership.
Yeah, separate ownership, this becomes the issue. Condominium rules, but we don't fight condominiums now, if somebody wanted to. Do a condominium condominiumize a lot, that wouldn't be a problem. The only problem would be the eight thousand square feet or the six thousand, seven thousand square feet for structural. You know, if we went, uh, cause you've got the eggshell cabins over here, where those were done on, an exception, right?
Well, no, they were, the exception was made to join them with the foundation rather than the roof.
Those eggshell cabins over here.
They, there's, yeah, there's concrete underground that joins us together, I'm not going there. It's the rules, it's course the rules as they're written, that and that.
Yeah, it was, it was a an attempt to get around the. It was silly, but it worked.
And we heard, and those are rentals.
They're condominiums.
It's 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 condominiums.
Yeah, and I think they did something similar over on. Ocean Spray?
Shark Ocean Spray, same thing, uh, review drive, ours on review drive, same thing. And I, well, that was commercially, so they said it didn't apply to.
I don't have a problem with it from from a planning standpoint, but let's make the rules crystal clear, so we're not having to play games to get around it.
And it was a generous attempt to to make that happen without changing the the rule, which was just misbegotten. Then they started saying, oh, no, you can't do that.
And then you're an environmentalist, there's all that, the book reads over there, it's crazy.
That's only if it's wide, still, I.
It serves no, it serves, the thing is, it serves no purpose, you know, the only thing, the only thing it does serves a purpose to get around the rules and. And so it's my opinion that we need to change, change the rules if there's a large enough appetite for that type of structure. And I think it might be, you know, there's a, I get a lot of phone calls every month. You know, how small can I build and how many of them can I put on that lot?
And that's what I would agree to, and that kind of fixes this issue in, you know. I I think that uh for a best starting family coming in and living in one of those little cottages. Even though your neighbor's like right there is more desirable than living with somebody with common wall, but that's, that's.
And that's condominium bodies, that's different.
That's the only way it's allowed today.
Well, I'm just saying, if 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 we change the rules to make it available, so they don't have to cheat the rules to do it or.
But but that was to get around the minimum square footage tables, to call it in.
Well, no, at the time, the mayor's square footage were were interpreted, I I think correctly. In other words, they didn't apply to multifamily type houses on on properties, they applied to. Single family red houses on properties, if you want to do. Two structures on one cover, four structures on one common lot, those were as small as five hundred and fifty square feet for for uh practical purposes, so. There there was, it's weirdly missing, we interpret the lot now, or law now versus then. I mean, in addition to the roofline outset.
Alright. And I I will take upon do some more research on this and.
We have to want to clear that line between multifamily and commercial too, because there was some, there were some allowances that let them do a lot more on the commercial side, which I'm. You know, I mean, that that should be about as open as you could get.
Alright, yeah, we're gonna bring this back again, but start thinking about R one versus R two and higher lots. You know, there's definitely a appeal to doing it in multifamily lots and not doing it in single family lot, reducing minimal lots, reducing all that.
Yeah, what what um. Brian said was 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 true, most people given have a chance but not will regret not living in an apartment. Even the two units.
Yeah.
Or 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 you have having a house secretary by ten feet, that's better than having.
And 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 as also I've come as doing that is in these common wall structures, the two duplexes. Uh, there's a series of them over on Review, they're being built.
Yeah.
Two of the duplexes are on um, you know, two lots, and there's a separation of ten feet between the other duplex.
Are the rate people separated.
But they're both common wall structures, so we were able to.
I call it the weird. Which doesn't make any sense to me, but.
Well, it's what we could do here without going back to the council to say, what do you think?
Was that common wall always in there or did the planning commission add that?
Row houses.
No, row houses, common wall structures have always been in the code.
Okay, so that wasn't added.
Based on, based on my look back in history.
Thanks for putting the covenant too.
So let me see if I pop in and talk to the mayor very quickly about this, see where his thoughts are on this. He did say that this year he would let us make a go at the minimum square footage and the thousand square foot base square footage, if we wanted as a group. Bring it up. Before council, um, so. I've been, I've been for council a while, and this is all something that I would take. Cause I really firmly believe we need to figure out a way to make more affordable housing for people, because right now. People were hiring to start working, the city can't afford them. Because of the nature of the city, if they want to own a home.
I think when you look at the ocean spray project down there, the hotels are actually quite far apart, all things considered. They're they're not just cheap by job, they're on that lot.
So I'm trying to what is that our six?
Something like that, so somewhat larger lot, maybe eight thousand, nine thousand.
Alrighty, do we have? Anything else?
So, um, I've been in communication with um HBL, who is the firm that's doing our shoreline master program. Uh periodic review. And they are almost to the point. Where they need to have a public hearing uh before you guys as the planning commission. Um, to to get eyes on that document, get your approval, and then also take public comment, um. I think I will have the draft, the red line draft of that um document. Um, hopefully by the end of this week. I would like to get that to you guys as a group, I'll send it to you Gary, and then you can distribute, you know, as you see fit. And then. They would like to have. I I guess not a, not an approval, but they would like to know that you've seen the document and if there's things that we need to look at or go back and totally redraw. Uh, I haven't seen anything that scares me, and we fixed a few of the things that that have been issues um as far as the shorelines go. Uh, and then, and then the uh. Probably the first, maybe the second meeting in March.
Okay.
Um, have a public hearing.
What I'd like to do is, if we can do is something that the. The problem is, if we put it on the agenda. Or if we distribute it to everybody, that's about the problem then. That would be the, you know, we want to have it, we want to have it out to everybody before the first week of March, first meeting of March. We could discuss it at the first meeting of March, and then have the public hearing on it. Second meeting of March, does that make sense?
Yeah, they would, they would like to not do it in April, we would like to have it done.
As long as you get it to us in time that we can discuss it and put it on the agenda for the first meeting in March.
Yeah.
And I'll, we we will dedicate.
We have one more meeting this month, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if if we can. It's just our update, the periodic review, there's some, there were some state statutes that required some changes to language and stuff like that, and then we had a couple of things like. Uh, the freshwater emergent wetlands along the lakes and canals, uh if you go by the code, I have to have a delineator come in and delineate those wetlands. We know they're there, we have a vegetative buffer and a structural set map that was intended to protect them. Um, one of the things that I recommended and they've changed in that code that that you guys will get a look at is. It gives the shoreline administrator the ability to do that delineation and set those. So we don't have to have everybody that does a lake shore uh development go get a delineation for the wetland that we know is there, and we've already built protections into it. So it streamlines the process and reduces the problem process.
No, there's, no viewscape maintenance provisions, huh?
Yes, those are already in there, um.
Yeah, but.
To to an extent, you know, um.
Cause that came up at the uh. Council retreat again.
Oh, did it? Oh, you mean, you mean the Dunes Protection Act area, oh, that's, yeah.
That's not in the shoreline.
That's not in the shoreline master plan, that's a whole section of code on its own, that's title nineteen, yeah.
So that, that was brought up at the retreat again.
I know it's gonna keep coming back, and that's gonna be a really hard hard horse to kill. Um, but anyway, I'll try to get that document to you as soon as possible and.
Then that that would be our goal, I mean, if you get it, I I don't, it's something that we can have at least the meeting before the public hearing. Is what I, what would be best for us, so we can have an entire review and discuss it, and then have the public here, but also give the public more time.
Well, that would give us a chance to revise it if it needs to be revised based on the scripts.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
One thing.
Alright, I think, let me see who's up, Thorn, you're up for the next secretary. Go Thorn, what have you got for us?
Well, one question, uh, some months ago, we passed a.
Oh, this thing here.
The architectural standards, the residential architectural standards.
So it's a bunch of mobile homes going up to go meet it, are we forgetting about it or just building, probably even know about it or they just?
No, we are, as a matter of fact, Roy and I are working together, if if the permits were approved prior to. Um, the adoption of that, and there was a bunch of them in the pipe, because we we asked about that, or Roy and I looked back on it to see what was going on. But he's looking at, we're looking at him for, you know, specifically for architectural uh features, the articulations, we're looking for the roof lines, the. Front porches.
You know, all the new modulars in Parkerville.
No, all the new manufactured homes, well, all of the homes, but specifically, we're looking at those manufactured homes to make sure they beat those.
Some of those were ordered like eight months ago.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there was a bunch of them in the pipe before that ordinance was enacted, so, yeah, that had been approved, that's that's what you're seeing.
Anything else? Thorn, you're the secretary next time, well, good for you, you're you're doing the rotation.
It's not a breakdown meter like that.
Our next meeting is February eighth, twenty twenty three at T P M at this location. Do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Ryan, second. All in favor?